Call order, the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 26th. It is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel. Council members Clarence Federer.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Tim Riapeau.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does attorney corps number one consider change to 2021 lease agreement in Indianapolis for District 595? Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Colness was not certain whether he could be here tonight or not, so it does not look like he will be here. So for the upcoming year, we currently have an agreement in place at $100,000. What they're looking at doing for the upcoming couple of years at least, be for a two-year agreement, it would be at $150,000 a year that would be paid by the school to the city for renting the civic center. We would in turn set up a lease agreement for the central middle school softball fields for our use during the summer programming at a rate of $45,000 a year, which would be paid by us to the school. The school would then be able to utilize the $45,000 to make the facility improvements to the middle school fields, particularly what they're looking at is restrooms out there and some other upgrades. So I guess with that, we want to get the opinion of the council if this is something that we would like to explore a little bit further. If it is, then we would be working with the city attorney to iron out any of the details. Then I'll take any questions.
Has Ron looked at this at all?
Yes.
I mean, thoughts on...
I didn't look at this specifically. I did look into a couple of things. It's, you know, from my standpoint, it would just be a matter of drafting an agreement that's acceptable to the council.
But yeah, we did get from the league and from Ron there that it doesn't appear to violate any rules or anything like that.
Mayor.
Have we used those fields before? Have we been using them up till now? Yep. But just no exchange?
Right, exactly. We use the middle school fields for our summer programs. Similar, they use our South Park ball fields for their spring activities. And most of that happens over the course of the year, it's kind of just on a handshake agreement. So that's part of this, is we should probably have some written agreements in place for all those facilities, whether there's monetary value to it or not.
And they use the softball fields as well. I mean, we utilize them, but they have school programs on there as well.
Thank you.
Tim?
The only reason they want the extra money is they can't get it under their normal channels.
Okay. And Mr. Demers?
Thank you. I understand what they're trying to do, I guess. It seems, I don't know, shady maybe a little bit. It's a deliberate way to get around a rule that's set up by the state. My only concern is whether it's legal or not. We're going to be going to the state potentially with our own big items. I don't want to necessarily get on the bad side of what they're looking at, what we're trying to do financially. Like I said, I'm all for thinking of things creatively, but I don't know. I haven't gotten my head, I haven't, I know you said you might have talked with the league, I mean, what was the exact question that was asked, or is it, I mean?
Well, the question of it was, is, yeah, I understand where you're saying, you know, we go up $50,000, so really our, what we get for the civic center goes up $5,000, even though we're getting $150,000, because 45 goes back, in essence, you know, we rent the softball fields for them for $45,000. So the question was, you know, is, does that violate any state guidelines? Is that allowable? You know, is it legal? And that, and the answer I got back was yes. So is those...
We have the ability to rent anything that we want. We have the ability to enter into any joint contract with any other governmental entity. We can lease our fields.
I don't, you can, you can do those things, but the intent of it is to get around a state guideline, right? I mean, so does that, I mean, you can't write a contract to break the law, right?
But we're not breaking the law.
You know what I'm saying, though? I mean, whether, and that's maybe breaking the law is one thing, but I don't know. It just, there's something about it that doesn't kind of sit right with me, because the intent of the money wasn't to go to this type of thing. And then there's a back channel way of getting it to go where it wants to go. And there's lots of people that did that type of thing. They were categorized as, you know, money launderers or whatever. And we don't, I don't know if that's what people are trying to do, but that's...
The alternative way is they could give us the full 150, and we take care of, do it for 45,000. We do the upgrades.
In lieu of using the field.
In lieu of giving them back the 45.
We would do the upgrades to their property. That happens.
In lieu of us utilizing the softball, because we use those fields, right?
Tenants do leasehold improvements. That's, that happens.
Anything else, Mark?
No.
Dale?
I think the issue would be more what you're saying is if it isn't all out in the open. You know, we're doing it now. We've put it forward. We're bringing it out so it's transparent on what's happening. There's public comments, and it's not like cutting some side deal behind closed doors that doesn't get aired in that, well, right now, we're on public speed.
Right. If you do something, if it's in the wide open, whether it's, if it's in the wide open or if it's behind closed doors, if it's wrong, it's wrong. Right? I guess, I don't know. I have to look at it a little bit more, but I just wanted to raise my own concerns about the way it's being done.
Dale?
I'm kind of looking at like the business two turn back thing. They don't have money to fix that road, but if they turn it back to us, now they'll get money, all of a sudden there's money to give us to fix it. It's kind of the same similar situation, isn't it? I mean, really? You're doing the same thing, basically. You're just kind of, I mean, it's just a way around the system again. Just, right or wrong, but either way, we do it, you know, like as Mr. Repel said, you know, we could just do the repairs and, I mean, we could do that as part of, as part of like a lease agreement with the Parks and Rec or something that, because we use it all the time, you know?
I would ask, you know, does the product carry the value that is being paid for it? In other words, when they pay us $150,000 to use the arena, is there that amount of value? The answer is absolutely yes. We are heavily subsidizing those arenas with that dollar. So there's absolutely $150,000 value that they would be paying to use arenas. Is there $45,000 value in using those ball fields, considering the ownership of the land, the maintenance of the land, other factors into there, especially if it has some nice restroom facilities? Yes, the value is there. So it's, it's an arm's length transaction. The value is there on each end of what is being rendered. I'm fine with it either way. Just, the value is absolutely there.
And I guess, and I can't speak on what the rules are for the schools and how they, what they can utilize money for and what they can't. I mean, I guess I haven't discussed that at length, at any length with Mr. Colness. All I do know is that he just said that, yeah, this is a way that they could get some improvements done to the, to that softball field. Again, whether it's, whether it's money that's, comes from the state, I guess, I don't know. I don't know what the rules are, but he had asked, made this request. So we looked at it, did some checking on that it is, you know, legal. So that would bring it to the council and get some feedback before we put any, any more time into it.
I'm pretty sure they wouldn't have asked to bring it forward if they hadn't done their end too, so, you know, as far as what was going on.
Anybody else have anything at this time? See none? Thank you, sir. Number two, consider amendment to Board of City Tax Credits Agreement for Todd's Trailers. Mr. Gordy?
Good evening. And I'll apologize in advance. I'm losing my voice. So I end up with no voice. You'll have to just pretend I'm talking. There's a parcel that should have been included last year as part of the approvals that were done for Todd's Trailers. That parcel was omitted in the approvals for last year, and this particular action provides the additional tax credits that are needed to provide the tax credits to Todd's Trailer that will cover that parcel. It's a little bit complicated in the way it's worded, but what it amounts to is he received a benefit for one parcel last year, and he'll receive a one benefit for one parcel during the upcoming year. In each instance, we had decided to give a one-year tax credit. So he'll receive that, but now he'll have it over the entire package for the improvements that he made. He made almost a half million dollars of improvements on the parcel.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Gordy? Dale?
Are these the properties that are in Industrial Park?
No, these are the properties down at Todd's Trailers, down on Business Two.
Right on the corner, right at the tip, at the intersection?
Yep.
If you have a chance, check it out. The property looks really, really nice. He's done a good job with that.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Number three, request to adopt security camera policy. Megan?
In the packet, and I apologize, I looked at his RCA and I assumed it was one page. I didn't realize it was three, so I added the policy, so you got to read it twice. We have added more security cameras at City Hall here, and as you can tell, a few, some of the other buildings. Some of them have been there for a while, and staff was looking at setting up a policy on how that information is handled. Corey, head of our IT, kind of worked with the league and a couple of different sources and came up with the policy that you see. And right now, he's just looking for some feedback. Speaking with Ron, I know he hadn't really had a chance to review it a whole lot before tonight. Corey has shared a couple of other cities' policies with him, and just looking for feedback from you and then just letting you know to give Ron a chance to review and make sure everything's okay. We'll probably bring this back to the second meeting in December for, if everything's okay, a vote, since we have a short week this week. And it'll give time for, to make sure everything's in order before it's voted upon. So Ron, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I've already made some comments. I mean, the, the storage of this information would be under the Minnesota Data Practices Act. If you read it, it was misstated, I guess, into the Freedom of Information Act, which is federal as opposed to state. I think some of the things that we should probably look at is how long do we want to store this information if it isn't for designated for law enforcement purposes? The, couple of the statutes that he's looked at, you know, I don't know what our, I can't remember what our retention policy is. St. Cloud has a 14-day retention policy. I believe Burnsville, which he utilized, has a 30-day retention policy unless it's going to be designated for other purposes. The other thing would be, you know, how, is realistically, who's going to control that? David does the Minnesota Data Practices Act information right now. And it would just kind of follow that policy if you wanted to tighten that up. So it's, it's, it's those types of things that this group would end up having. I can just kind of tweak it a little bit more for the purposes of following state law. But there, I guess there isn't a reason why we couldn't have one if it's being suggested. I do know that St. Cloud specifically puts in there things that it's not supposed to be utilized for so that it, it narrows the scope a little bit more. So I'll look at that as well.
Anything, anybody have anything? Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions, two tracks, I guess. First, this Sunshine Terrace one, who is operating and maintaining that?
My dad and myself.
So does that, I'm just wondering if it would be better that that get transferred under the same policy, or do, is there a reason for?
I don't think there's any other reason, other than I'm not sure if those cameras are like digital, like these ones are, or if they're on a computer, I think you'd have to watch them off of like a video recorder itself.
Are the ones that we have here DVRs, and yours is not a DVR?
That's correct, so.
They're original with the building, or a thing?
Yep, yeah.
Well, I guess maybe at some point that could be a goal, is to incorporate those into...
Yeah, I don't know. I have no issues with that, so.
I don't think you need to be doing that. The second is on the FOIA stuff for the RFIs for that, specifically, well, it could be any of the facilities. How much restriction can you put on some of these? Say, you know, there's 17 at the police department. Say a victim comes in, or, you know, or someone, a potential victim comes in, are those going to be tracked? Are those automatically, do those have to go out if requested, or how, what does that process look like? Because I can imagine, I can't imagine all of the scenarios, but I would imagine there's certain scenarios where, you know, people may be, I don't know if it's stalking, or if there's an abusive relationship, or some type of thing, that we could restrict that information.
There is, I was just looking in our records retention policy, and when it comes to the police department and recordings in the police department, depending on what it is, there's different requirements for each. I did not look and see what would be considered private, but there are things that are used for evidence, stuff like that, has to be kept for so long.
If it's, if it's an ongoing criminal investigation, you know, at that point, it's, it's private, non-public, but it follows, essentially goes right down the Minnesota Data Practices Act.
But like, I'm even saying something, I don't know, like someone comes in, they think, oh, I guess it couldn't be a case, I guess, but claims that they're being abused or something like that, hasn't made a case. Do the reporters have an ability to go and take that? And, you know, that kind of stuff. And obviously, it must not be...
It depends upon the exact fact pattern with that, because it, sometimes it's going to be releasable to, to different individuals based upon the fact that it's essentially city property, unless there is some exemption to it. And then I'd have to look at that.
Okay. And then, these are just like security cameras? There's no designation between, like, because I think we have, well, I think it's funneled through Water and Light, but we have certain, like, streaming cams and, and those type of things that are on. Do those fall under this same policy, or is that separate?
I guess, those would be separate. How about the, like, the cameras in here?
Well, there's, well, not, well, there's these, but I would, like, there's streaming cameras on top of, like, the lift station...
Are they owned by the Water and Light, though, not City, or?
Well, if it's in the Water and Light, it's owned by the City.
You don't mean...
Well, I'm just saying, yeah. And that, that's a follow-up. Is this something that we should, I mean, it's done with, with Corey. Is this something that needs to be adopted at the Water and Light level as well?
Yes, we'll check into that aspect. But I want to go back to the, the police department one there as well. I know, for example, the, the body cams that the police officers use, it's something that's quite common when they're recording traffic stops and things like that, and they get requests for those regularly. One of the things that they have to do quite a bit is, depending what the request is, and then it has to be a viable request, meaning if, yeah, my point is, they do quite a bit of redacting on those before they send those out. For example, if it's a traffic stop or an encounter out in the street, if there's minors that aren't involved in it, they, they have to blur those out. They have to redact those before they go out. So the same thing would be thing for the cameras there. If they're requesting that, they really would need to save the time and what they're looking for. Then their determination would be made, whether that's a private thing or not. And if, if there's like some, like a order for protection, those type of things, that would have to go through, most likely be redacted.
And that all would come ultimately through you?
Typically.
Because you're the, aren't you the...
Eventually, it would get there. It would probably, those things, it would most, because if it's any kind of a case, or like I said, if there's an order for protection or something like that, that would go through the PD, and they would, they would check that.
Body cams have a separate statute that deals with that, and the redaction of all that information.
We do have a policy already in place for your body cams and our in-car videos, but we don't have anything other than this that would cover our security cameras. To best my knowledge, those don't have any audio. It's just the video. Or is our in-car video and the body cams do have audio as well?
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Question I have, and I've talked about costs, is there going to be, do we know what, let's say there has to be research done, do we know, have a set fee that the administrator or whoever is designated that does research, how much, let's say, we get charged? You know, talks about each department will have to get charged their fee. Is that...
You're talking about for requests for the video, or?
Well, for research and gathering of the data. Are we talking about operation costs or shared components? I mean, are we talking, what are we talking about fees in here? What, what fees are we talking about? Where are they designated? Is there a sheet that shows what the fees are?
Well, I guess, depending on what you're asking, if you're asking for the costs of the cameras themselves and the equipment and those type of things, I could...
No, talking about the research. Do we get charged, let's say Corey is the administrator and he has to do video?
I don't think that's dealt with here.
No.
But it, is that something that we need to look at, too?
Well, and that, well, that's a really good question, because it, it's, and it's a question that's very difficult to answer, because there's a lot of, depending, for example, if they request information through the Data Practices Act, through the state of Minnesota, you can...
Get reimbursed.
You can get reimbursed. However, there is a, quite a bit of debate going on, on what is reimbursable, how you calculate that. And depending on how savvy the person is that's asking it, there's, we've had requests from individuals that make requests all over the state, and they will argue the minutia of this with you ad nauseam. So I guess the que, the answer, the short answer is yes, we can charge for that. However, it usually, sometimes it ends in quite a bit of debate prior to get to that point, because we, we are allowed to, particularly if it's going to be quite an extensive search, that would require, like, say, redaction and staff time to do that. We are, we can collect that prior to collecting the data, because there's been a history of people requesting this, finding out it's going to cost $175, and they're saying, forget it, not picking up and not paying it. So if it's going to be something extensive, we can require payment upfront. But again, you, the couple of times I've dealt with it to that level, it, I've spent literally hours debating this with, with some of the people. So, so, see, so yes, we can, but it's not a, it's not a hard and fast rule that we will get paid for it.
But will we receive a bill from Corey to do his research anyway? Because he, how was that fee structured? Him being administrator of those, or manager of those?
I don't believe we've talked about that yet, have we, Megan?
No. So we can...
Yeah, that's, that's something we haven't, that's something we haven't explored.
Kind of where I'm going is not the outside, it's more of the internal realm of it.
No, I guess we haven't thought of that. I'll make a note.
And then, do we have notices everywhere where there's cameras? You know, talks about cameras are in use. Talks about this in the policy. Do we have that already in every location?
I don't think so.
We don't. We don't here, though. In this building, we don't.
We don't here.
Is that, does that need to be in this policy, or is that a state statute that we have to actually post that?
I don't know the answer to that.
I do not see anything in the state statutes that says they have to post that. I think what you're doing is you're giving the public notice that they're potentially going to be on camera. There, I haven't seen anything in state statute that says you're required to put, put a notice anywhere.
There may be a note of that. We'll check on that. I hadn't thought of that one either.
The other thing, I think, you know, where you're talking about expense, and that becomes the data storage, you know, so if you're only holding on to it for 14 days, there isn't much to turn around and look at, depending upon the circumstances. So it wouldn't even be available to be, to be redacted. So the length of time is going to directly correlate to the, to the amount of, of redaction or, or, or request. The other thing of it is, though, is that in these, there, I don't believe any of these things have, have audio, do they?
And another one's here.
So then you're just looking at video redaction, and then for that day. So it's not going to be so much looking at pages and pages and pages of, of materials and try to redact them. It's going to be whether or not there's somebody in that video that you're going to have to redact out. And then you may need to get some software to be able to do that easier than, than we currently have.
The longer you keep the material, the bigger the server has to be, the more cost there will be. So you have to be aware of that. We keep limiting our mocks that we keep at the library. We aren't updating the server.
Mayor?
I know in the past, when we've had requests for information, even, even paper information, there have been folks who have said, the process is too tedious and the cost is prohibitive. You are not giving us access to this information because of the tedious process and the cost prohibitive factor. And so I think the more clear we can make that part of this, as to here is the process to acquire this video, and these are the costs. And here, oh, by the way, is where the costs come from. You know, you watch a detective show on TV and they check video at the local convenience store, and bam, there it is. But I was in on one of those where we had even a few days worth of video, and to try to find out, when did someone come or go? You can take hours, just perusing video by the minute, trying to figure that out. It takes way more time than a person thinks. You know, again, on an hour-long TV show, they dedicate seven seconds, and there it is. But in reality, it is, it's difficult to dig through, and particularly over a longer timeframe. That's another reason not to save six months' worth, because then the data search becomes that much greater, if you don't have a day and a time to go back to timestamp and everything. So, yeah, I think the more clear we can make it, you know, this is how you would get access to it, and the cost will just basically carry to the cost that we incur to retrieve that for you. We're not trying to make it a complicated process, nor are we trying to make it cost prohibitive.
Demers?
Thank you. I forgot one other thing. Does this have an effect on any of our current tenants or potentially future tenants? Will they, can they do their own outside of this, even if it's facility? You know, it would be our facility, but they, do they have to follow under our specific policy, or how does it?
That would be different. I mean, for the Minnesota Data Practices Act, because it wouldn't be government information, we wouldn't be the one that would be holding the information or storing the information. If it was a private, like, say, down here, well, actually, that'd be county, so it'd deal with the county, but would be a different, we wouldn't be responsible for their information.
And there's nothing about having the county facility being surveilled or anything under our stuff?
I know they're aware of it, and they haven't, they haven't expressed any concerns to me, if they talk to you or Nancy. No, and actually, I just spoke to their director here this afternoon about a couple of different things, and it was, they've never expressed any concern with it. And I know she's well aware of it.
Anybody else have anything? See none? Thank you so much. Number four, discussion of potential sales tax. Carla and...
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll get started, I think, and then Carla will jump in whenever she can to jump in and help me out. So since our last work session a couple of weeks ago, and we had the ice arena study presented to you all, Carla and I have done some work on the, one of the discussed potential funding sources for a project of that nature, of course, a local sales tax. Carla reached out to Baker Tilly, which is a municipal advisor, formerly... formerly known as Springstead. You probably all recognize that name a little better than Baker Tilly, to get some more information on what bonding would look like for a project like this. And we also have had some discussions with the League of Minnesota Cities on the steps to move forward with the sales tax if we wanted to do that. So in your packet in front of you, the first thing that we listed, and we've had some discussion at previous meetings over the course of this year, we listed out some of potential projects that we think could be considered for a sales tax if we, if we looked at going that way. Of course, the first one for that being the ICE Arena Study that we looked at last week. We put in there the, the total projected cost for the LeFave Park improvements that we've discussed this year. We listed ballpark improvements. I listed that specifically to Stels Park, but we haven't really, that price and kind of the scope of what that could look like. We haven't really narrowed that down yet. That could certainly include softball fields or little league fields, you know, as we get a little further in. If we wanted to, to narrow in on a certain specific area, we could do that. But the, the number, the projected cost there for kind of what's described, I think is, it just in my estimation and conversations with other communities in this region that have done some of these projects, I think that would be a pretty good starting point for us without having had any engineers or architects look at anything. And then that's jumping back up to the third one, the Greenway Trail improvements, that being one that we recognize is over the course of time, the, this amount that we have coming in through our utility bill each month is not going to garner enough funds to be able to completely overlay the entire trail system as it stands today over the next, say, 20 to 30 years. So that would be one that certainly some extra revenue could help with over the course of time. So going to, from the next, that page going to the next is some information from Baker Tilly. They looked at and kind of ran some projected numbers based off of what the sales tax revenue is today on our swimming pool sales tax, ran some numbers on what a 1% sales tax could bring in versus a 2%. And the, so the first couple of pages you're seeing are one, is the 1% estimation. And the thing we found, just quickly looking at those, is that even in a 30-year window of a 1% sales tax, that would not bring in enough revenue to cover even the first project, the ICE Arena Study. So we, we then moved on to a 2% to get some information on a 2% sales tax. And that information does show it would bring in about, just short of $2 million in revenue a year at, and that's using an average of $85,000 a month in, in revenue, which is about the average we receive today. And that would, for the first project, an ICE Arena project, it would cover a 20-year bond or a 20-year project payback on, on that part of it. So I just wanted, I think, as a first step to this or continuing this conversation with all of you is to look at a couple of those potential, what percentage of a sales tax would we be looking at if we wanted to try to move forward on anything? Get some feedback from you on the list of projects as well as what that sales tax number would look like. And then if we, depending upon what you all feel about it, then we could start taking further steps down the road with, with financial advisors and the league to see what, what the next steps are for the sales tax. The last document that we included, of course, is just showing you all a reminder, we've talked about a few times, but a reminder on what the starting of local sales tax looks like. This document just describes the steps that we would need to take. And of course, reminding just that if we wanted to move forward with the November 2020 election, we'd need to have this information to the legislature by January 31st of this coming year, so in the next couple of months. So with that, just I think if anybody has any thoughts, questions, anything, Carla, Carla is going to pass out a little handout. Just as we've been sitting and brainstorming and talking through things, we keep going back to our, the visioning goals we've discussed at our, at our, kind of our joint meetings the last few years. And we starred a few that we feel like are kind of important, that we think we all could potentially be hit on with a project of, of this nature. So with that, I'll leave it for any questions you all may have.
In this process, you know, after we went through the Civic Center, are you guys, as a group, moving forward, talked to the residents and discussion with the community? And we're end of November and to have something, you know, vision, even the scope better defined of what we want to do is, do you think that's unattainable to have things put together before in January? And then I guess the second part of that is, if that's true, how far out are we looking at even, we'd have to wait till the next year, understand that, to January 31st for that session. But then when could that go to a vote? Because I know you're looking at November. So I mean, just kind of, I think that timeline from now until in January is really tight and-
Absolutely.
Especially with the holidays and you're not going to be able to meet with people and then bring it back and have more discussion. I, they're great ideas and one, I'm glad you're doing this, but I'm just saying that I think the timelines are really short.
Yeah. I, I don't disagree with you at all. It would, the, more than anything, I think it was important for Carla and I to try to put this information in front of all of you so that it's out there and we can have some discussion about it. That was probably a two or three-part question. The first question being, have we had any community input? We've had, I'd say, a continued, you know, personal discussions with people in the community. I've had, I know others in our department have had. We have not scheduled a community input meeting. I wanted to come back to this group and kind of get a feel for what your all interest was in it before we move forward. I don't, we've, I've been to a Blue Line Club meeting and spoke with them about it, spoke with them about kind of the timeline even and making clear, you know, what, where it stands today and maybe what the level of urgency is for some of this. Do we have time between now and January 31st to have, say, the final, you know, even a final design concept of what something like this would look like? No, we don't. So if we were going to move forward with that, with that timeline largely, and Carla and I had this conversation, a conference call with the League of Minnesota Cities yesterday, what we would need to do by January 31st is have some sort of a resolution passed that had the, like, the high end of the project, total amount included in it. And then that would allow us time between today and the November 2020 election to have a lot more of that community input, a lot more of those meetings and design, a lot more of that, kind of that, the structure of what this all looks like so that it's prepared in time. I think it's a, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's 60 days before an election is when you have to resubmit your final resolution and your final project and ballot information to the legislature. So we would have, you know, we'd, we'd have some time between January and end of August to be able to continue that work. But are we going to have it ready by January 31st? No. The, the last part of your question, and I think that lends, lends to some of the urgency with this, is that if we don't do it by, have it prepared and sent in by January 31st of this year, we'll miss the opportunity to have it on a November 2020 election and then we won't have a chance to do it again until a November 20,000, 2022 election. So it pushes it back for sure two years down the road.
Three years for construction at least.
Yeah.
2023 by the time we start.
Just to vote. So, so that's kind of what's in front of us is, yeah, there's a, it is a very short timeframe for this one. The, there's obviously some of these numbers in here are, are largely estimates. You know, some are narrowed down better than others. I think, you know, the ICE Arena thing is probably pretty accurate, but again, that's accurate on a 2020 construction cost. It's not, you know, it's not forecasting out years down the road even.
When we spoke with Baker Tilly, they said that add in 2.5% of inflation every year that you don't do the project for inflation and construction costs. And we did, we have spoken with some groups. We spoke with two baseball groups to see what their thoughts were. We spoke with Sacred Heart on their thoughts on, you know, baseball improvements. Both groups said the same thing, just even immediate improvements. We talked about softball. I'll, why not, I'll train, but turf, just to cover that and there would be great use for that. So we have talked to some groups, you know, obviously Greenway, I don't even know if we need, we wouldn't talk to anybody there. But we do know that, that will need improvements. So the other thing Reed and I talked about is that we're willing to go to the businesses and see how they feel about a 2% versus 1%, just because if we do a 1%, we'll end up paying lots on interest and we probably won't be able to do much of the projects. Would have to be very scaled back. And we just want to do it right the first time so that we set the future for East Grand Forks for another 40 years. And that was why I whacked around with the visioning goals. These are what we had in our strategic planning last time we met. We're going to meet again now this year in January. So we kind of looked in, Reed and I looked at what ones, these projects would cover, and we have five that are highlighted. You know, we want to refurbish the rinks. We restore trust with the public and with our, strengthening the city and the school partnership, working with them to get this done. Long-term master plan with parks and trails and rec and that covers that. And upgrade city facilities. And so this, you know, parks and rec is a huge part of our city facilities and this would cover a lot of that. So we just think it'd be, you know, we're covering the visioning goals. I know we talked about, we want to do that when bringing things forward, so.
You mentioned that there's some of these numbers you have in there are just numbers maybe you gathered from your discussions from other cities or from, you know?
The biggest one being that, the ballpark improvements. That's one that's just largely based off of what other communities have spent on their improvements.
Have we looked at, even with the Civic Center, have we looked at what it costs and everything else, what our engineer fees would be? Because these will be incurred in 2020 timeframe. Have we budgeted for that and what it's going to cost us to, do those, all that work up for each one of these projects? Have we looked at that or talked to them?
And are you asking on the other projects?
On any of them.
Well, the, the arena project, those engineering fees are in that total.
I know, but you're going to have other engineering fees on top of that. If you're going to need to look at, if other people come together, you have these meetings and they're seeing certain things that maybe we need to look at.
Oh, okay. Yes. Thank you for clarifying that. So I did, after our last work session, I did get an, a proposal back, a verbal proposal back from JLG on what their, their continued pre-designed services would look like, to be able to put some of the design concepts together that we discussed, to be able to come to community input meetings and kind of garner that information and lead that effort. It would also include, I'm just going off a conversation, it would include being able to look at like our, the, the statistics on our tax base and how much of, if we did a local sales tax, how much of a project of this magnitude would be paid by non-residents or visitors from the region versus our local residents, kind of as an offset of, or this is what it would cost you to do it on your property taxes. JLG would be able to look at and study all that, again, over the course of time from now until we vote in, in next November, let's say. They, I asked if they would have it ready for this work session, if they could put that into a written proposal so I could bring it all to you, just under their time crunch. And with the holidays, some of the people we're working with had this entire week planned off already. So they said they couldn't do it by today, but they, they would be able to, for the December 10th work session, they could bring that proposal back. I, I think it's a strong proposal from their part to be able to help further the project along. And I'll, I'll wait until it's in written. If you guys are interested in seeing that, bringing that back on the 10th, so you can see it in written form what it looks like.
Even on the other projects, I mean, we don't have an idea of, I mean, the other ones you have in here are the other, you know, are we discussing what they might be fees in 2020 that would go into looking at these? Or are we comfortable that we, with the budget that we have, that we're going to be fine with these fees that are going to come, you know, incurred?
So like the Greenway Trail, those numbers did come from WSN, which they always build in their fees on that. So that, that was a number they gave us. When we talked about the field improvements, when we talked with, when Reed talked with other ones, you know, they look at the total project costs, you know, it wasn't just construction dollars. And then if, you know, if we are actually planning on do this, we would set up a fan, a fund, just like we do with the sales tax. It would be a project, just like we set up when we do street projects. So that's where the costs would go. When the sales tax would go through, if it goes through, then that would actually pay for those costs.
What you always said is if, if that doesn't go through, then those costs don't have, they don't end up having a revenue source and, you know, we take it out of the general fund generally.
And we do have some, you know, we do have some funds set up for projects. You know, I always put in capital project funds. We put numbers in there. I guess to the point, if the sales tax doesn't go through, we, you know, luckily, right on our sheet here, we built our reserves and that would be something that the council would have to decide that, yes, we want to move forward with this, that if, you know, the project doesn't go through, that we have a fund balance that could cover it.
Because that's a pretty typical process when we do have, we do have a project and we start incurring costs well before we sell the bonds or the revenues. We set up a fund, we start paying money out of those funds. It's covered by the reserves until we, until one or two things happen. Either the project goes forward, we sell the bonds for it within anticipation of the special assessments and then we pay that back and it fills that up. Or if it doesn't go through and we don't have those funds coming in, then yeah, it just depletes our reserves by, by that amount.
Any males? The other way, something we haven't brought to light is the naming rights and donations that we may get with some of these projects. Hockey rink being main source, but I think the baseball fields, we can probably do some naming rights on those too if we have to. And it can be a considerable amount. It can be nothing. We don't know until we actually get into that project, but that'll help drive this cost down.
I'm still getting over sticker shock. I'll just be very honest on this whole thing. How we got to this point, just to go back and, and review for a moment, we had some deferred maintenance on our arenas and we have some obsolescence of the R22 coolant. And the thought was to do the minimum there, what would that cost be? And let's get around, our heads around that. And it sounds like that's around $3 million. And our thought was, yeah, it's a little over three when we asked them.
No, it's about six when you look, you have to put the parking lot in there also.
Okay. Well, but we're specifically talking about-
Okay.
The cool, you know, the refrigerant, the plants and stuff.
Sorry. Okay.
No problem. It was just over 3 million. And, and granted, the parking lot's been hanging there for a long time. Well, our thought was if we're going in and doing that level of work in our arenas, why not come out better than we went in for some additional incremental cost? And I remember Mr. Demers, we walked out of a meeting and I think we had the number 3 million in mind to put them back just right in the current way of doing things. And you asked me, so what amount would you be comfortable going to in terms of a, of a sales tax? And you threw out a number like 10 million. And that number was high in my mind. 10 million. Whoa. That's a big jump if we're talking three, to put it back how it was, but with current technology, all brand new, and to jump to 10. And you're, well, you said, well, keep an open mind. We may have to see how this conversation goes and, and here we are. And now, and maybe we'll do it, but now we're, we've launched up to 24 million plus an inflation factor. And I just have to be very candid with you all and say, I'm still struggling with that, the leap from three to 10 to 24. To me, that is not a given. I would hope we could comb through that and, and maybe prioritize, maybe stage it out a little. I know there's a, there's a huge value in doing the whole thing at once. And I see how beautiful it will be when it's done and what an asset it will be for the whole community. And you know me, I'm about lifetime fitness. I like to run and lift weights and ride bike on the trails and, and I like to, I didn't like that Exos thing that you made me do. That almost killed me, that sport acceleration just for fun the one day. That's all good stuff. And, and so really to be a community that, that focuses on fitness, and, and these buildings, you know, what do we have? We have cold temps up here half the year. These buildings allow our kids and our adults to stay active all year long. So I love the whole thought of it. And, but I just have to be very candid and say the leap from three to 10, Mr. Demers, was a quan- was a quantum leap. And now the leap from 10 to 24 plus, I'm really struggling with it, just to be very candid about it. And so someone just, not that I matter, but if, you know, we can maybe convince ourselves along with certainly priorities of the community, right? What do the people want us to do at this juncture for them? And I like the conversation like that, you know, let's find out what funding mechanism might they prefer, what level of expenditure might they prefer, what mix of projects might they prefer, because it's really their money.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you. Oh, and maybe Mr. Reepel can shed some light on this. Well, he felt it was probably much higher than what I'm thinking. I'm right with you there. I think it's a, it's a great plan, a great vision, great goal. I think this is where really the river meets the road, right, is how you pay for something like this. And I guess the only way I can get behind this, and like I said, I was one of the originators, I think we were sitting down in St. Paul and we were talking about, you know, what could happen or, you know. So I am excited about something like this, but the only way I could really get behind moving it forward is to get solid commitments from, you know, how we're going to pay for, you know, and off the top of my head without trying to shut down the conversation, but the way I think about it right now is, you know, we need to think about almost like a third, a third, a third. We need to think, the city's got to come up with a third, we need to ask our, you know, our support communities to come up with a third and then try to get, you know, to that naming rights or something like that to cover the other third. I think if you can get to something like that, this looks a lot, a lot better, you know. I don't know, and the reason why I ask Mr. Reepel, I know, like when they did Icon, that was pretty much all built by.
That was all donations, 14 and a half million.
And, you know, it's a different situation on the other side of the river as far as how they raise revenue and stuff like that, but, and I don't know if a $9 million ask between, you know, home run clubs and blue line clubs and figuring out their lights, if that's too big of an ask, I don't know. But we need to start having that conversation and quicker, I think. And, I mean, I don't know if you've had conversations with them that is not, is ready to be disclosed yet or anything like that, but we need to know what that number is because like I said, I don't think we can pay for this all on a sales tax. I don't, I don't think, I think that's one part of it, you know, but I don't know.
That's the beauty of maybe slowing it down is it lets those other funding sources materialize with some gentle nudging by people able to do that sort of thing.
And Dale.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm kind of struggling with this also because I still honestly believe that the 24 million for that arena is overinflated big time. And when I look at the contingency fund and the professional fees, that's just almost 25% of that whole project. There's something wrong with that. Don't care what anybody says, there's something wrong with it. It shouldn't be that high. The plant that they want to put in there, they quoted $3 million. I've talked to a company that said they could do it for 950,000. Things are overinflated in that whole project bid and I think it needs to be addressed and come down because I think, and without the citizens involved in this whole project, if they approve it, that's one thing, but if they, if they don't want it, I'm not for it, so.
That was, that was just a feasibility study.
I understand that, but.
The bid will be bid out between three to four different companies. The 950,000, I'm not sure what kind of system you got there, but uh-uh. I've talked to Crookston, I've talked to Thief River, I've talked to the Ralph, I know what we did in Grand Forks. If you can get one for 950,000, order it today because it might not last either.
Well, the people I talked to are professionals, but, but the thing is, is that I understand it's just a projection, but the problem is when we took those projections out there, that kind of opens up the ball field for these contractors to bid higher because we're looking at a higher price. That's the way I look at it. If we come in at a more reasonable price, then that contractor's got to do the same thing. When we do these projections, as he, as Reed just said, the projections he's got in here right now for all the stuff he wants to do is, is high. Well, if we keep putting everything high, everything keeps coming back high. That's just the way it works. And maybe it's time we start doing things a little bit differently on how we do these projections.
We sure can take the plan as, as the vision and then we can put those elements into there, which we've paid for the plan and that's our plan, so I think it's a good tool, whatever, however we use it.
So Reed, what is your, I guess, how to ask this is, what do you want from us and where do you want to take this going forward? And I guess, what is your, I guess, the druthers in this right now coming from us today and then what you want, if you're going to bring something back on the 10th or December and I guess maybe lay out what you are wanting, our blessing or whatever it is.
Well, yeah, appreciate everybody's feedback on, on everything. It's, that's why it's here on the agenda tonight is to get this very feedback we're getting. It's not to try to make you believe that I'm trying to push this thing through in the next six weeks by any means. I think there's a lot again, I think, to go through here. I would sure, the biggest thing I think that I would like to ask that we can continue on is that it can continue, the conversation I think has to continue. The, I would say one thing that I would love to see as a next step is to be able to bring back an element of furthering a community conversation on a design or a concept of what this all could look like so people can have a little bit better of an idea of what it could be there. Everybody had great points and some of the continued conversation that we need to have in figuring out what does, what is the project, what does the project look like? You know, the feasibility study that you all looked at, to hit on a couple of comments, it's the refrigeration system that they looked at replacing, they're replacing industrial strength refrigeration plants. That's what they suggested in our feasibility study it should have. Could we do a cheaper system? Absolutely, we can do a cheaper system at a less than industrial strength grade. You know, those are some of the comments that we talked about when we had our steering meetings is, you know, and that's why I kept going back to, you know, we felt like we were bringing a responsible price point, a responsible project. It could have been $35 million if we asked for it to be that. We didn't, we wanted it to be something that was responsible, yet was not going to underscore it because my, my feel for what the price, and I'm kind of focusing on the arena study now again, but my focus to it is that that number is only going to go down from here. And the only thing that's going to make it go up is however many years it takes for us to get to a point where we start anything. But, you know, we're going to work backwards from this, that starting point and find a place that's right for our community. So sorry, I'm kind of rambling on, but I think the biggest thing is, one, I'd like to see some sort of, the next step, again, I could have that ready for the next work session on the 10th is what a design would look like, what their, JLG's proposal would be for some community input to garner some activity on that. You know, and again, that's kind of all trending towards if we want to have more answers than questions before we bring it towards if we're going to approve a sales tax or not, then yeah, we're not looking at this January 31st to have anything ready. I don't believe that we'd be ready for that. Now, with that said, my concern and the reason that it's here in front of you tonight, it may be faster than you all would like it to be, is that we have ice plants in our ice arenas that are at an age where we're not, we've put, I did the numbers this afternoon just to see, in the last four years, we've put $110,000 in maintenance into two ice arenas' ice plants. And that could change tonight. Something could change tonight. We, I went to the ice arena last week to start the compressor, well, last week, two weeks ago, got a call at 5 o'clock that it was on a, on a day that, it was Veterans Day, it was a holiday, it was on a day that the arena was closed, we didn't have anybody working during the day. I got a call at 5 o'clock when the part-time got there, the ice was melting, the compressor hadn't run for 24 hours. It just decided it didn't want to start. And, and, you know, I kind of go in and I close my eyes and cross my fingers and hope that it does start when somebody goes back to press the button again. You know, it's at those, the systems are, even with all the maintenance and the money they've had, they're at a point that I don't think anybody can come in and look at them and say, yes, I can promise you that we're going to keep it running for the next three, four, five, seven years, because you just don't know what might, what component might go out or what part might go bad and then you don't know if you can get it again, with, at least without a substantial cost to it. So that's the urgency of where we're at with some of this, is there's like, we have to find a balance point of, is this the project we want and how do we keep moving forward with that? And at the same time, if we're going to go down this road, I love the idea of it, but then we need to make sure that we're still following up on the current systems and we might need to be okay with if something fails, there might be a pretty hefty price tag even to make sure that we're, we have ice next week, next month, next winter, all those things as part of it. So I don't know if I answered your question there or not, but that's what my mindset is.
What I'd like to see too is if you are going to have meetings, let us have the opportunity to be there to hear the citizens and I would urge citizens to reach out to us to let us know what their thoughts are, you know, and, you know, as the process moves on and our discussions move on, I think that we need to have that. If we are going to be at the meetings, you know, Reagan will let everybody know that their quorum will be present or whatever so we don't break any laws, but Ron, do you have something?
Well, I'm just going to talk as a citizen. I'm just looking at this thing and the only way that this is going to happen, so if you think that you're going to want to have a newer ice arena, the only way this is happening is some type of a sales tax. There's not going to be the way to do this. So the next step is, is hey, we don't have to go with the 24 million, 27 million, but if you want to have this in any type of a timeframe that, that is for 20, for 2020, you put together what you have, you submit it to the, you submit it to the legislature. If they approve it, you now have a year to go through everything that you're talking about. Have your citizen input and if at the end of the day, they don't want it, then you just pull the plug. You don't have to worry about it. But, but to continue to kick the can down the road for two years, three years, four years, five years, it'll never happen. I, you know, so if you've decided that it's going to need to be done and we're going to have to have some type of a sales tax to do it, get it going and then pull the plug if you don't like what you see down the road or if the citizen's input nukes it. But you'll never get to that if you don't at least present whatever you have to the state legislature.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, what Reed had said and I just want to make sure, I think very important for what I would like to see out of tonight too is the council being okay with Reed bringing back the proposal from JLG where they put it in writing as far as what they would be offering for the next stage of the, of the.
That's what I was asking about.
Yep.
Well, and I agree with that too. You got to have costs, but it's got to be presented.
First, yeah.
Go ahead.
Mayor was first.
Okay. One option we would have along the lines of what Mr. Galstead is talking about is we could decide, say for example, what would be the most basic cost of locating this ice arena alongside the civic and the refrigeration plants? Just identify that cost, go to the legislature for that dollar. Now we take the next year and we do the fundraising, the naming rights, we've basically taxed the region for a basic facility that will serve us just fine. But if you want the bells and whistles and all the other features, let's get the naming rights, let's get all the rest of it, I'd feel good with something like that. To go to the legislature for 100% of what would be a good, basic structure and then go to town and raise the additional funds. I would be very happy with such as that. You may end up with the basic version because maybe the fundraising goes poorly or maybe it goes better than you think and you can actually go above and beyond. That would, that would be one option that we could consider.
Carl.
I guess by going with sales tax and having to vote on it, you truly get what the, what the citizens want because they're actually going to answer, do we want to do this or not? And all we are asking is let, let's make, let's let them make a decision. So let's bring it to the legislature. This is what we feel the community needs, this is what we got from input from other people, and let's let them decide.
But what if we bring one that's ridiculous, just for example, and they turn it down? After the legislature has approved it and it's voted down by our citizens because they say it's just over the top, now we've kicked the can even further down the road, right? Why not put something out that in our gut is right, that the citizens would really want to embrace?
Mayor Gander, I agree with what you're saying. The only thing maybe that I would bring as a point of devil's advocate to that is that I think that the order of it, if I was going to request you to push it forward right now to Ron's point, I would rather that we put it forward right now than we're requesting, if we're only talking the arena part of it, this, because we have that number, I'd rather we put it forward today than we're requesting approval for a $24 million sales tax. And then we use from January 31st until August 1st to narrow that number down and we can walk it backwards from there, but we can't go the other way. So if, if it's 24 million today, but then from April, May, March, you know, March, April, May, June, we have these community meetings, we figure out, okay, the Blue Line Club is willing to bite off this much and the Figure Skating Club is willing to bite off this much and we've had a conversation with the community and they don't want all the extra bells and whistles, we can walk it back down to that responsible, whatever smaller number that might be that you suggested. And then that can be submitted to be vote on, voted on next November. We can go back, we can go lower in price between now and November, but if we submit it today to your, your suggestion and let's say that that's a $7 million project and then we listen to the community for the year and they say, no, we don't want that, we want the 24, 20 million dollar thing, we can't resubmit to the legislature and say, ah, we want an extra X amount on top of it. But we certainly can say, no, we're going to be more responsible with this than what we asked you for in January.
Mine would probably be 12 to 15, just so you know. I mean, the stripped down version would be 12 to 15, I believe.
You're thinking just the civic center and leaving the VFW vacant for now?
Just, you know, whatever that would look like to, to the cost.
And you're on with that. The, the price and the feasibility study for the new arena, just a new arena connected to the civic center is about 11 million dollars. That doesn't address the VFW's issues, it doesn't address the civic center's code. That would just build a new arena next to the civic center and.
And maybe some parking.
Yeah, there would have to be a way to tie in some parking inside, so there it's going to elevate a little bit, but.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we, well, maybe not are we, but can we be absolutely certain of what the process is? If we go to the legislature and say, we want 30 million, we want 50 million, we want 10 million, whatever, what's the process from once it passes through legislation to putting it on an actual ballot? What's, you know, we have a timeline for that as well, right? I would imagine Meghan would have those timelines.
It'd be the same process as the pool.
Right. I'm just saying, are we absolutely sure, because I agree with the mayor, the worst, well, not the worst, a bad thing that we could do is put out something that's, that even if we were saying, this is the pie in the sky, we're just asking for this, we're back, nobody, nobody wants that, nobody, they want people to be definitive, they want us to have, they want us to have a concise, a conservative plan of how we want to go about this. They don't want us to just say, here's kind of the smorgasbord, smorgasbord of options, trust us. You know, they want, they'll want us to be very concise. So the quicker we can do that, I think the better. I agree, like, I would rather get this, the tax, the sales tax thing going earlier. If it's possible, go to the legislature and lay out our case for a larger project and rein that in once we've had those. I guess I don't have a problem with that if we're absolutely certain we don't get locked in because whatever the legislation says is what, it has to go on the ballot or whatever. So I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that process.
And I can get that, that question answered because we have been talking with Kennedy Graven along with Baker Tilly and I will specifically ask that question, but I would assume what they'll say is what, what you put in the ballot will go. It's kind of like what we did with the pool, we had, you know, a number at 2.5, it only went to 2.1. And I know when we did the sales tax, the pool, we were all worried that it wasn't going to go through. But, you know, you just give it. gonna go through. But, you know, you just leave, give it out to the public and see what they want to do. Um...
I think if you bring back on the 10th, what those fees costs are gonna be, I think that's gonna help a lot too, even though I know it's miniscule to what the whole project is, but just so you know what that is. And also if you're looking at these other projects besides the expansion of Civic Center and the VFW, I mean, how comfortable are you to maybe get some more concrete numbers on those other items if you, by the 10th?
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, I think that we could. Just, just based off of conversations with JLG specifically, they have project comparables and other projects they're working on in other communities. I would think that we could come up with something pretty, pretty accurate.
Along with your questions about what Mark has asked and also...
What's the deadline for putting something on that?
And al, and also...
Be 60 days before the...
90 days before.
90 days. It's in the information here.
90 days.
Then I guess my other question would be, in the timeframe that we have, how long before, does it have to be like, we can pass a resolution the week of January 31st, or does it have to be into their office finalized and all that?
It has to be the, to the committees by the 31st. So we...
It has to be committees by the 31st?
Yes. So, so we, we have a meeting, like a regular meeting on the 21st, so we could vote on it then, or we have a work session on 28th and we could, uh...
I think it would have to, doesn't have to be down earlier than that though?
We've seen things that have to get to committees and, I mean...
And I did have, I did put a...
I mean, we've been talking to...
Well, I mean, we, we actually, when we looked at calendars, we looked at January 21st to approve it by, by this council.
I just wanna make sure that if we go through all this and, let's just say everybody's like, okay, let's find, let's do this, you know, that, okay, well, well, I guess, well, we can't do it because we didn't, we don't have our stuff down to them.
And we did, oh, sorry. We, we did talk to Kennedy Graven and they would be willing to help us put all the documentation together in the right format with the legislature. They have other cities that are working on this right now, and so they would help us with that process too. And like I said, Reed and I would do some of that, we'd have to do the homework to get to them, um, be it what the benefit is to the region, you know, as a sales tax, it's not just a citizen's investment, we're paying the sales tax, it's other people coming in and what that economic benefit would be by having these facilities upgraded and more people coming in, more people spending money. And we would speak to, um, the businesses and see how they feel about that.
Do we have any idea from them what other, what the amounts that other cities are gonna be asking for?
We can ask, and we just didn't check on that, I guess. Well, Al Craver just did, what, 65 million?
35 million.
35 million?
In, in a, in a previous election.
But that was a different rule. See, this is all new to everybody.
New rules.
Yeah.
Somebody just finished an arena in Minnesota with a, a donation from an NHL player. I saw it in the news.
Collin.
Morehead.
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 Collin.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Poolman has only been in for a couple of years, but we can probably get him up someday, huh?
But that's how you can do it.
But he played for, he played for 20 years too.
But that's how you can do it, and it could come even from Ingolstadt. I mean, we don't know where it could come from.
It could come from anywhere, absolutely.
Exactly. You just have to let the process open up to that and, and, yeah, ask for it to the right ones.
I, I guess the other thing is when somebody wants to put a naming rights on it, they want to have a really nice facility. So we could have that really, you know, nice facility up there and then they decide they want to pay for half it.
The legacy could leave, Mr. Gander.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever. So, and someone's gonna check to, to Mr. DeMure's point of, whatever we get through the legislature, can we pull the dollar back before it goes to our people for a vote? Or does the wording have to match exactly? Who's gonna dig that up?
Reed and I will.
We, we asked that question yesterday. They're already working on it.
Good, good, good.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? You done? Appreciate it. Thanks for the hard work on this.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Don't feel bad, we're bad, or you have any bad questions.
No, that's good. That's how we get, uh, get direction on our work. That's okay.
Counselor President, I just mean to, don't mean to interrupt you real quick, but I, I, I'm gonna have to leave for the evening.
Discussion on 2020 budget. Carla.
Oh, you're gonna miss out, David, in the fun.
I apologize.
It's okay. Um, there's, I sent you about three documents on the budget. Didn't figure you want the whole thing again. Um, we've done, um, a little more work with each department on things they need, things we can postpone. Um, and, um, for example, we found out workers' comp is going up 9% as a whole, so we, I changed those numbers. Um, so right now, at the 5% levy, um, and, and pretty hard numbers are where we're at, we are about 180,000 in the hole. And I know that, um, we talked about not only dipping into the fund balance, but we also talked about where our truth and taxation would come in with our residents. So that's on the other page with all the little yellow colors on them. And so, um, we have those same five properties that we've been following for the last eight years now. Um, if you look at the taxable market value, um, they are staying a little bit more stable. Other years they've gone up, um, some of them even went down a little bit, but if you look as a whole, they're, they're more stable than they have been in the years. Um, if you look at, um, the difference in the actual city taxes, um, the highest one is $49, and one of them is actually went down $93. So if you look at the percentage, the highest amount of the city taxes going up actually was on the last property, which is a commercial property, and the value in that keeps going up. So, um, most of it's 2 and 3%. Some of them are even 44%. I know that was right in line with, with the, I know the mayor has said. So, um, that was actually good to see. Uh, we knew that we had additional properties coming in. We don't know how that's gonna affect it. We didn't know how the assessed values were gonna affect it, so that was actually really good news to see. Um, the other page I sent was just kind of an update of where we are now in 2019. Um, as you can see, um, we have, have the revenues on here and the expenses. I also put on December revenue, which we collect, uh, property tax from the county, and our LGA comes in there and a few other things. So that's guesting it at almost $4.5 million. So we are right on target of, of maybe then having, increasing our fund balance a little more, a little bit more. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
I'd just say of the 180, 021, so 180,021 dollars that we would take from the general fund, I really want to make it clear to everyone, not in this room, because you all already know it, um, we carried forward close to 500,000 from last year, plus or minus, and we're being intentional about using part of that surplus from the previous year to hopefully hold the line on taxes in the current year. And so I like your analysis from Polk County that shows it's in the 2%, 3% increase on a per property basis, and that is an intentional use of that 180,000 dollars is to try to just kind of hold the line and still cover our expenses. So that's not accidental. If, if we, the council gave direction to you and Mr. Murphy to zero that, you would zero it with the help of our department heads, but it would be bad, right? It would be bad in that a lot of necessary things wouldn't be purchased, uh, maintenance would be deferred, you know, just bad things would happen. So I, I like the expenditure levels that you came to. I like the 5%, and I think we're, we're just being intentional to say of that 500,000 surplus from last year, we are willing to allocate 180,021 dollars to this year's expenses, is the way I think we've looked at it.
Mr. DeMure's.
Thank you. What does that look like then for next year? Do we, do we anticipate, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if we're using some reserve to buy down this year, do we anticipate having a bigger bounce next year or?
Well, I know on person, personnel has typically been 5% to 7% just, um, in increases, and that's why we kind of, you know, if we keep it at that 5% levy, is I know that we talked about doing that, so we could try to save that. Um, one of the examples in here has to do with a payloader, uh, blower that we have on the greenway. Um, what I did with that is that we're actually putting it in the central equipment financing fund, and then we'll pay for it over nine years. So right now, that would, the plan would be to pay that in the general fund for the next nine years. And I know that Reed had made a comment today about the greenway for the amount we're collecting, it's not, it won't, it won't cover in 30 years, it won't be able to even repair the whole trail. And so I know some discussion at the, uh, Park and Recreation Commission meeting, they talked about how they would like to maybe take a look at that and see if, because it says for maintenance and, and the payloader is maintenance, so there's other maintenance that needs to be done, and maybe Reed would want to touch on that. I know he talked about, um, even spraying for the weeds next to the trail, that if we could take that out of the fund instead of just reserving that 45,000 every year to repair the trail, that if we did that, we'd have enough money to cover all the, do all the cracking we need, excuse me, until if the sales tax went through, we could, you know, just do the whole trail. But otherwise, that fund will maintain it till we have to replace it.
I feel like I've had this fight before, probably three or four times. Um, as someone was there with, along with Nick, putting the, putting that greenway maintenance trail fee into every person's water and light bill, um, and having a very clear understanding of what the intent was. It was for, specifically for maintenance of the trails, like, you know, capital maintenance of the trail, not operational maintenance, not, you know, the piece of equipment that's gonna float around or, it's, I guess, my point is, is we get into these problems where we promise the people that this is how we're gonna do something, and then all of a sudden it, it starts leaking over into this and then leaking over into that. That's how trust in government erodes, in my opinion. Um, I think what we should be doing actually is taking the extra money that we aren't paying for our streetlight fees, move that extra money into, and just change the amount, if it's $2 now into the, the greenway trail maintenance fee instead of the amount that we pay on our street maintenance, or streetlight maintenance, because we aren't paying the electricity bills that we have been since we changed to the new fixtures, and then use that money to pay for our, our trails. We shouldn't, I don't, I don't believe in doing a, um, a sales tax for the trails. I think if we doubled it, I think we'd be pretty close to having a, and if we saved our money and not let it leak all over to other things, we'd be, I mean, that's 80-some-thousand, almost $90,000 a year, um, that we have to re, redo trails. So I'll, I'll fight, every time, I know we've talked about, you know, using money for all kinds of different things on those trails, and it wasn't what it was intended for. If we want to, I guess, we should pass a new resolution, in my opinion, because that specifically wasn't what it was for. But, moving on, the other good thing, you know, I take the mayor's, uh, the comments and, you know, Carla put, put together a good analysis of what people, how it's gonna affect people, and I think that's important. Um, you know, I think it just finally dawned on me, like, to use our abatement program as kind of a, another, uh, angle into how, how much money we're adding in. And working with Mr. Gordon, it's, it's been, you know, on average about $50,000 a year, plus or minus some, maybe it's, maybe that's not even average, that might be a, a high or a low average. Um, but that says basically that we've been adding one, of our levy, about 1% of that is just due to residential expansion. So I think that's a, that's a pretty good number for us. I know we'd like to see that residential expansion go faster, but of the, you know, 20% of our new levy is directly paid for by new residential expansion. That's not commercial, that's not industrial. So I think that's a good sign. It, it, it bolsters what, what Carla's saying is, you know, we're really, when we say 5% levy increase, it's really to, to an existing homeowner or business, it's probably in that 2...
One to three.
Yeah, 2%, or 1 to 3, I guess.
Yeah, well, one of them is like 45%, so.
Yeah. So like I said, I, I, I think it's, I think there's lots of ways we can back into the number, but, but it, even at that 5% number that we've continuously brought down and brought down, I mean, even that is high to what the actual impacts are gonna be to existing customers or residents.
Anybody have any other things for Carla tonight on budget? I see none, ma'am?
Nobody's pushing to lower that number from 5, any less than 5, are they? I'm just messing with you.
Okay, so, um, I, my question is, and as we have the, um, truth and taxation on December 10th, last year when we had the meeting, we actually approved at the same time. So the question would be for Meghan and I, is that something that you're interested in doing again? Because then we'll have the resolutions already. I think it was, um, good for the citizens that showed up so that they could see that, yep, this is where it is, this is what it's gonna be, they can ask any questions if they have, and they, and they know it's a done deal that day. So that would be our only question, is that if we could bring that forward on December 10th for the resolution to, accept the budget as it is.
I would assume that's fine with me, and I'm better bails.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Good job, you guys.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Everybody, second my report, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.